We proceed.
Okay, perfect.
By etiquette, do you mean, so I'm sorry, by etiquette, Sarah, I think you mean the Zoom etiquette. If you would like to do that, I would appreciate that.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, then I will start off with that and then we'll go into the agenda. So good evening, everyone. Welcome. Thank you for attending the special heritage meeting this evening. All of you did receive an email from myself prior to the meeting with regards to our Zoom etiquette, as well as with the Zoom link that you have used this evening. So I'm going to start with the public members. Again, thank you so very much for attending. Again, we're just asking that you remain on mute with your video off during the entire process of the meeting. Should you have any technical difficulties, please do not hesitate to go out and then come back in. For those members who are delegates this evening, again, we do ask that at this time, your video and yourself be on mute, which you are, so we appreciate that. When we do get to the item five, public presentations, and the chair calls upon you, we are asking at that time for you to unmute yourself and present your webcam, should you wish. You will have five minutes to present to the committee. At that time, there may be questions and so on and so forth, but when your time is up and when the chair does move on to the next delegate, please mute yourself and take your video down. As for our members, thank you, welcome. Hello, nice to see you. With regards to this evening, when we are moving or seconding any items that are, any motions that are on the chair or on the floor, sorry, please put your hand up in front of your video. Mr. Kokovee, I understand we're not using video for yourself, so I will ask you if you are yea or nay on the motion. So please advise of that. Should you have any questions again to the members while there is a discussion on the floor, please put your hand up in front of the video so that the chair and/or myself can recognize you, at which time you will be asked to unmute yourself and to speak. Mr. Kokovee, I guess it'll just kind of have to be us asking you if you have any comments with regards to.
I can, I can always just speak up.
You can, and I appreciate that.
Okay.
All right, sounds good.
If I've got, if I've got something to say or I, I need to have my position clear, I'll, I'll poke my nose in.
Fair enough. Thank you. All right, guys, so that's all, that's all for me this evening. Thank you so very much, and I'm going to pass it over to the chair now.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. I want to thank you for joining us in this afternoon's meeting. My name is Lori Brett. I think that is showing on the screen, and I'm the current Chair of the Heritage Committee. I'm very pleased that so many people are interested in this matter, and I I want to welcome all the members of the public who have joined us and those who have asked to speak and those who have submitted, submitted written comments. And I want you to know that your input is important to us and it is appreciated. Before we begin, I'd like to, before we begin the formal part of the meeting, I would like to provide some background on the purpose of the meeting, along with information on the mandate of the committee and the history of the schoolhouse property. And I apologize to those who have previous knowledge of this matter. It's not my intention to bore anyone, but I think it is especially important to begin the meeting with a contextual overview. So to begin with our mandate, the Heritage Committee is an advisory committee to council, and our mandate is to provide recommendations to council on matters related to the town's cultural heritage. We are tasked with the following: maintaining an inventory of heritage resources, listing and designating buildings deemed to have cultural heritage significance, and reviewing applications for alterations, additions, or demolition of heritage properties. With tremendous help from our staff in the planning department, most notably Rita Jabor, who is the town planner, and Sarah Aubin, our planning assistant, the committee has recommended the designation and listing of over thirty-three properties, twenty-one of which are in Harrow in the former Colchester South. We are also tasked with promoting and educating the community on our rich local history, which we do through the town's website, through brochures and literature, through our heritage plaque program, and through a long list of activities that generally take place in February during Heritage Week. That's coming up, and our theme this year is the lost settlements of Essex. We are currently creating heritage tours for walking, biking, and driving, as well as a three hundred and sixty-degree app that will allow people to view the interior of heritage buildings in a safe matter manner in light of the COVID restrictions. So why has this meeting been called? I called this meeting when word was received that council had declared the property at one ninety-five Baggett Street, commonly referred to as the Colchester Schoolhouse, a surplus. This information reached me on December twentieth, the day before council was expected to pass bylaw nineteen eighty-one, authorizing the private sale of the property. Members of the committee were alerted to the matter by email, and in response to the published request for comments, I drafted an email addressed to the town clerk and council requesting that they defer passage of the authorization bylaw until the Heritage Committee could meet and discuss the matter. It appears that council heard from many concerned parties, and they did subsequently vote to defer the matter. They also announced that the developer would be making a public presentation to council at their next meeting, which is to be held this Monday. The developer has also offered to provide our committee with a similar presentation tonight. We're grateful for that, and they'll be presenting to us shortly. Now, a bit of history, and I provide this for everyone, members of the public, for staff, and for committee members. The Colchester Schoolhouse dates back, dates back to eighteen eighty-one, and that was the same year that the government announced free compulsory education for all children. The current brick schoolhouse is located on the same lot as the original schoolhouse built twenty-five years earlier in eighteen fifty-six. The property was purchased by the town in two thousand and eight as a result of Heritage Committee and widespread community interest in its preservation. At the time, it was thought that the building might serve as a community center or a public rental space once repairs were made. In two thousand and sixteen, the Heritage Committee recommended and council concurred that the property was of cultural heritage significance and should be listed on the municipal heritage property register to prevent demolition. As a listed property, it could still undergo necessary alterations, and so various upgrades have, over the years, been initiated by the town, including new windows, new roof, and asbestos abatement. That's my understanding. There may be more details on those changes. It was noted at the time in two thousand and sixteen that the schoolhouse's design is an excellent example of a rural nineteenth-century brick one-room schoolhouse, that it was erected in eighteen eighty-one as part of a historic moment in time that saw free compulsory education extended to all children, and that it is a local landmark for the village of Colchester, one of the oldest communities in Ontario dating back to seventeen eighty-three and the migration of loyalists at the end of the American Revolutionary War. In recent days, I've heard the schoolhouse called one of the historical pillars of Colchester, a gem, a defining feature of the community, and if you've had a chance to read Jeremy Parsons' letter, which was attached to the amended agenda, you will see that he calls the area "a unique historic precinct with a significant collection of public buildings and heritage resources." The area notably includes Christ Church, built in eighteen seventy-six, the cemetery with its earliest burial dating back to eighteen oh eight, the replica chapel built in eighteen nineteen, and the church rectory built in eighteen ninety-three. The Heritage Committee has never lost sight of the historical significance of the schoolhouse. In two thousand and eighteen, the committee added an item to the agenda called Friends of Colchester Schoolhouse. Before the pandemic, we were discussing ways of identifying interested parties who would operate as an arm's-length organization and would raise funds and identify suitable uses for the property. This continues to be a work in progress, hampered, like so many projects, by COVID. That is the background context. As you can tell, the meeting is specifically focused on discussing heritage conservation matters related to the proposed sale. I'm aware, and the committee is aware, that there are other issues that the community may be concerned about, but those issues will have to be taken to council as our mandate is very specific and is related to heritage conservation. So to begin the formal part of the meeting, we'll start the agenda by taking care of some housekeeping matters, and then we'll get right into the public presentations. And then finally, the committee will consider various matters under new business and are likely to make some recommendations to council. So, to the committee members, are there any declarations of conflict of interest? Hearing none, we'll move to item three on the agenda, which is adoption of the published agenda. Can I get someone to move that the published agenda for Thursday, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, of the Heritage Committee, this special meeting, be adopted?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Okay. I think we saw some hands there. Sarah, are you satisfied with that?
Yes, I saw Phil.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Adoption of the minutes, that the minutes formed part of our package, that the minutes of the Thursday, November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty Heritage Committee regular meeting be adopted as circulated. Can I get a mover?
Phil.
Phil, and a seconder?
And Steve.
You're great.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Okay, I assume we are all in favor of that. If anyone is against, please let me know. Which takes us to the public presentations, and as per our procedural bylaw, we are allowing four presenters. We would ask that presenters focus their comments on heritage matters, as that is our only mandate, and that if there are two presenters, my understanding is you have ten minutes to speak, and if you are one presenter, you have five minutes to speak. And so I'd like to turn it over to Kim Lewis and James Flynn. Sarah, you may have to come in and give some instructions.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Kim Lewis and James Flynn, what I will do is I'll stop sharing at this time. But Kim and James, again, if you'd like to unmute yourself and put your video on, I do have your presentation. However, if there are a few items that you'd like to speak to first, or if we, if you'd like to hop right into the presentation, please advise.
Hi, and thank you so much. No, if we can jump right into the presentation, that'd be wonderful.
Perfect. Just for Mr. Flynn and Mr. Lewis, when we go through the presentation, when you want me to go to the next slide or the next page, just say next, next slide, please, okay? And I'll go through it.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
I'd like to start by thanking the Heritage Committee for allowing us to share a little bit of our presentation this evening. A larger presentation will follow on Monday, the eighteenth, at council. But we really appreciate the opportunity to demonstrate what our intentions on the property are. Again, my name's James Flynn, and I represent the group that has a offer to purchase on the property. If we can go to the next slide, please. Both the Flynn and Lewis families are longstanding residents of Kingsville and Essex County, both business owners and owners of the Grove Hotel in Kingsville. The Grove Hotel is an eighteen fifty-four building that was purchased in two thousand and sixteen, and we turned it into a memorable destination while maintaining the history of the building. This led to us being awarded the TripAdvisor's Top Twenty-Five Hotels in Canada, actually ranking us number four in all of Canada. During the COVID pandemic, we launched a Hotels for Hero initiative and donated over four hundred and thirty-nine rooms to keep essential workers safe during this time. We are committed to preserving and repurposing historic gems like the Colchester Schoolhouse. That's a little bit of background about us. Next slide, please. You can see our building, built in eighteen fifty-four, in the top left of the slide. We've maintained its appearance today. The bottom right of the slide is the Grove Hotel as we're operating today. Next slide, please. If we're approved, we wanted to make it clear that we couldn't agree more that the Colchester Schoolhouse is a gem. We intend to utilize it, rejuvenate it, and not remove or demolish this property. We intend to maintain the exterior appearance, which we can show you in upcoming slides, and we intend to make the necessary repairs and improvements required to make sure it's structurally sound for generations to come. Next slide, please. This is the building as it appears today. There's been three additions to it, to the north, the south, and out the east, which are the original structure. The original structure, of course, is in the center of the building, and our intentions are to restore it to that gem it was over a hundred and forty years ago. And if we can go to the next slide, we've taken the liberty of removing those items digitally to show the committee how we intend to repurpose that building. The additions that aren't historically significant have been taken off the building, and this particular slide shows the chimney remaining that has chimney swifts. Our team is currently working with the Ministry of Natural Resources. There are specific guidelines that need to be followed if that structure was to be taken down. So we have two slides. This slide shows it remaining. If we can't remediate that, the next slide, if we can move to that next slide, please, shows it being taken down. Our intentions, if approved again, would be to maintain this historic gem for not only the residents but for generations to come. So that's our presentation for night, and just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to show you what we're thinking.
Thank you very much. Committee members, do you have any questions? For these, the proponents. Steve?
Thank you, Chair, and through you, to Mr. Flynn, thank you very much for coming and addressing our committee this evening. Yeah, there's a great concern that the building be kept for generations. That's, it's been here a long time, and we want to see it remain as members of this committee. The interior, do you have something to share with us on what you, as your repurposing goes? What would be the use of the building? How would, how would that be going forward?
We don't have any renderings of the interior of the building, but again, on the eighteenth, we will be presenting a larger view of what our intended uses for the property. We've actually developed, we've designed a development to incorporate the schoolhouse. Our entire development surrounds this property, and our intentions are to maintain it in its historical value, not changing the exterior of the building. Of course, inside, I'm sure many committee members have had the opportunity to visit the inside of it, and it's had, it's gone through so many, I guess, renovations and different uses over the years that it doesn't resemble that one-room schoolhouse that it once was.
Okay, thank you. I'll let anybody else ask a question there.
Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none. Thank you very much, Mr. Flynn. Oh, Steve's got his hand up again. Yes, Steve.
Thank you. I didn't want to take up a lot of people's asks, but I got just a couple others. So the the building itself, we're going to secure the building in what Lori was talking earlier, that the town has invested in making sure, we put the roof on a couple of years back, we put the windows in a couple of years just to secure the building. We wanted to make sure that, you know, there was deterioration happening, so we needed to protect that investment. So those are the things that we did to help seal it up, keep animals out, keep the weather out, and just secure it. The, I know there's a lot of things that you can't necessarily go into, but the idea that, okay, we're going to secure the outside of the building and bring it back, build it up to what it was before. Can you share with us any information at all with regard to how we are going to protect the use around it? Because I would imagine that if we're going to move forward with designating this building, we would also want to designate probably the front apron of the building so that its use across the street from the, from Christ Church is still, as you come into the corner, you enjoy the look of the church, the schoolhouse, the cemetery that's there. It really is that corner of southwestern Ontario. It's the, it's the address where we started. So just, just if you can share with us just some idea of what we're going to see, you know, the vision of making sure that that connection of those three areas is maintained.
Okay, Mr. Flynn or Mr. Lewis?
Jim, did you catch that question? I know you were kicked off.
No, actually, I'm sorry. I just got back on. Steve, I apologize. So, Kim, if you could take this, I would appreciate it.
So as you'll see on Monday night at our upcoming presentation, the views from Baggett Street will be unobstructed. We will have a full view of the schoolhouse, and we were very thoughtful in wanting to maintain that view. So from Baggett Street, you will have a full view from the corner of Beg and Sullivan Inn. You're going to have a full view of that schoolhouse.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Richard?
Thank you. Gentlemen, I appreciate the, your stated intentions in terms of the building itself. I'm trying to take it back to as close as possible to the original, the original structure. I sort of like to expand a little bit on Steve's, the direction that Steve was going, and ask you how much of the, how much of the property around the building, around the schoolhouse is, is going to be considered part and parcel of that building? And the reason I ask that is because the, we're talking a schoolhouse here, and inherent, an inherent part of a school is the schoolyard. And I'll use as an example another historic site in our municipality, namely the John Park Homestead. The John Park Homestead, when you refer to the John Park Homestead, you're not referring simply to the house. You're also referring to the lawn surrounding the house. You're referring to the outbuildings that were originally utilized by the, the Park family. It's, it's a, it's a package deal, so to speak. In the case of the schoolhouse, I understand that you might have, you might have plans for part of the original schoolyard to be utilized in a, in another, another fashion, but are you foreseeing preserving a certain area of the schoolyard immediately around the school building itself?
I thank you for that question, and if I may, again, on the night of the eighteenth, our, our full site plan will be put forth. But yes, the, the east side, as Kim was speaking to earlier, off of Baggett Street and the south side, like the southeast corner wrapping around the building, is untouched to maintain, obviously, the appearance of the schoolhouse and the yard around it. We do not intend to fill that site from, you know, east to west with development, but to maintain, I guess, that appearance, if you will, with the schoolyard around it. Thank you for that question.
Yes, Tony?
Good question. Once the, once your, your changes are made, will the property still be available for the public to visit? Or will there be any restrictions? You're not turning into a personal residence or anything like that, are you? Will the public continue to be able to visit the site?
Absolutely, and thank you, Tony, for that question. Yes, like our hotel in Kingsville, open to the public. And, you know, that, that, that's really at the heart and soul of, of what we do as developers, is take historic gems, repurpose them so that the community and public can continue to, to enjoy them. So yes, it's open to the public.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Those were good questions, and the answers certainly helped us to understand the intention here. Are there any other questions before we let Mr. Lewis and Mr. Flynn go and move to the next presenter? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
We do also. Next, we have Perry Basden. Perry, are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me?
We can.
Unfortunately, my video seems to have, the host has dropped it, so I don't necessarily need my video. It's not a problem if I just do audio.
Okay, that sounds good. Please go ahead.
As you know, I had sent a, a letter to the Heritage Committee. Looks like I started my video maybe, so we'll see what happens here. And from Mr. Flynn's comments, I think we're only getting part of the story of what the development is for the school property. In my original comments to the Heritage Committee, I mentioned in particular, are you able to see the screen or is that out of, available right now?
We can see it.
Okay, we'll go to full screen mode here then. Basically, this is an overview of the letter that I sent to the committee. I'm sorry, got the wrong file. My mistake. Let's get the right one here. Nope, wrong one again. Oh, don't worry about it. What my intent is, is to is explained to the Heritage Committee was to try and preserve this property as it was intended to originally when the town had purchased it. There's methods that we can use, outlined graphically many times verbally in the minutes of the Heritage Committee meetings, where people have come forward, and for whatever reason, the thing never came to fruition. A lot of the times, the interested parties perhaps didn't come back. There's a lot of issues that I had found by looking through the minutes for the last few years where it appears that recommendations even made by the Heritage Committee have fallen on deaf and ears when presented to council. Heritage Committee, for instance, recently, is twenty nineteen, has suggested having a survey available for the heritage, I'm sorry, the fun days, fun fair days at the marina and the park with a flyer specifically for asking for residents' input regarding the schoolhouse. Unfortunately, that was not done. It was supposed to have been tacked on with part of a display that the Tom Pining apartment was having. That was dropped, and they did have a flyer. It was more on a six-question questionnaire. It's the only mention of heritage at all. There was absolutely no mention of schools. There was one word in there. There's the only mention of heritage at all. There was absolutely no mention of schools. There was one word in there as a checkbox on one of the questions. If anybody was interested in a heritage as one of their options. So from seeing that, I realized that there's some disconnected needs and I've explained that in the in my letters and documents that I supplied to the Heritage Committee, which form part of this meeting. So it's my intent, first of all, to try and save it, to keep it in the public domain. I am willing to act as a catalyst to push that process forward. I don't think the Town of Essex has shown a lot of enthusiasm for getting that done ever since they decided that they were not going to fix it up as a cultural center. I do believe it's still viable. I think it's possible on a much reduced scale. I noticed that Council of Garkman in April of 2020, I believe there was a motion at the town council meeting regarding a donation of $100,000 to Urka for use as a as a tourist information kiosk or setup of some sort. I'm not aware of the details for JR Park Homestead. Actually, I believe that that would have been an ideal opportunity to have it in the schoolhouse. Had it been fixed up over the years, it would have been a great location for it. It's a little bit out of the way. It's in a more built up area, but it would have been acceptable use for the old schoolhouse. So to that end, I believe there's enough interest. I think the Town of Essex, when they went ahead and sort of noticed a surplus for this property, it kind of hit a nerve with a lot of people in in Colchester. And I think there is sufficient evidence now gathered by talking to people in the community, phone calls I've received, emails I've received, that there now is a time to generate the interest, get it going, have it registered, and any other steps that are necessary. There's methods. Richard Boris done excellent job of explaining it to meetings over the past years. I think we're ready to move forward with it and I'll take the lead on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Perry. So what I've heard from your presentation is that you would be interested in being a a lead member of a potential Friends of Colchester Schoolhouse Group. Is that what we're hearing?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Bazden?
Yes, I have one.
Yes, Tony.
Mr. Bazden, what would be your concern if a private developer took over the site and maintained its its the original heritage in some way?
My pressing concern is the developer hasn't really specified what are the use for the property, other than you'll have a visual sightline along Baggett Street and Sullivan Street. I have heard many rumors and they are rumors and I'll accept them for that. But I believe it, some of the rumors indicate it's going to be used for short-term rentals, Airbnbs, if you will. And I don't think that's an appropriate, if it is a true statement. I don't think that's appropriate for that heritage property. Why would you put something that is modern to the last 10 years when Airbnb's just started up in a heritage site that is consistent with something that was built in 1881? I think that would detract from the whole area there. In addition to the one street, number 195, where the schoolhouse is, the town also owns the vacant lot at 255 here, Baggett Street, directly north of it. And there's also an easement from Baggett Street down to the lake that could be developed again as a small park. And then again, with the the schoolhouse, the park, the vacant land, which was currently used a lot of times for overfull parking, if you will. I think that'd be a great opportunity to get a small parquet, an anchor, a little center, heritage-based, available for picnics, family gatherings, whatever it is, as it probably did back in the 1800s. The, on the opposite side of town, you've got Bell Park, and then you've got the busy downtown core area with the major linear park, the Marina. Very busy time down there usually. Some people enjoy having a nice quiet area away from the hubble and bub of all that's going on down at the Marina and the beach. This has been seen to be used for that quite often. As a matter of fact, I was down there last Sunday, met a couple of Windsor. They were down at the waterfront in that little extension, the easement, and enjoying a little lunch together. Now, this is in the middle of winter. Imagine what draw you could get if it was developed as a green space for the whole area.
Just a follow-up question, if I may, Lori.
Yes, certainly, Tony.
Yeah, so the the town has had this property now for how long?
Since 2008.
And so what, why do you think now would be any different than the last 12 years where there's been no activity at all going on on this location? Like, why, why do you think today you can, that the town and other people would get involved to make a change now? Like, it's sat vacant for 12 years. It's become more and more dilapidated. There are pieces on that original property that really don't really belong there, the the front end and the back end. I'm just curious as to what, what's the difference today over the last 12 years with respect to this property?
Thank you very much for that question. I believe that there is an interest now. From people I've talked to, most of them are under any depression. They see that people from the Town of Essex going in there on occasion. They see work being done, restoring it, putting a new roof, new windows, things like that. And they say, a lot of them say, well, we were waiting for the town to come forward with a proposal and nothing was ever done. Now, they were waiting. People are waiting, have been waiting for, well, I think that was originally council lost focus when the building at the Marina became available and they were trying to turn that into community center. Whether that's a true statement or not, I have no idea, but the point is, people have been seeing some action around there and now they say, well, it's going to be sold. We can't have this. We've been waiting for the town to come forward with some sort of proposal and it hasn't happened. So let's act, act on it and see what we can do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. Mr. Bazden, thank you very much for coming forward, for sending your letter and putting some some real research out there for us and things for us to look at and to, you know, look back on ourselves and see what's what's happened. This is what this meeting is for. This meeting is to bring people with different ideas together to look at the schoolhouse, to look at the value of the schoolhouse in many different ways. There is a proposal going to council on Monday, but that's not what we're here really to, that's one of the things we're here to decide. The other thing we're here to decide is how far do we want to go with with listing or registering this property? I've had phone calls and emails from well over 70 people over the last couple of weeks. And to Tony's question, why is today different? Well, today is different because people have acted. People have found out that this could change. This could be different, something different that we thought was going to happen could happen. And it gets people into action. So I think you're right to bring this forward. I think we're right to talk about it and decide is there a group willing to come together to to put that friends group together? There, I can tell you from my opinion, I'm one counselor, but on council, there's not a priority for funding for this this project right now. We've got a lot of other big issues going on. You're right, we put in a a community room at the Marina. We took back that upstairs. It used to be a restaurant a couple of times. That is now a community room that is available for rent for anyone in our community. We are supporting John R. Park Homestead. We will have a tourism kiosk there that they will man, that we don't have to have to staff. We, they'll be pushing the community of Essex for us. So those, some of those things at the schoolhouse was when they bought it and originally said, okay, this is what we're going to do. Maybe those don't fit 100% anymore, but it doesn't mean that there isn't things that can be done, that there isn't value to the community. And there are people that will come forward and use that building. So I appreciate you coming out and talking to us and and bringing up the things that have been said before in these meetings. And and that there is a move, a movement of people that are interested in in keeping this building as a town place, including the property that's, so just to all of your points. Thank you very much for bringing those forward. And like I said, there are a lot of people out there that share your views. Thank you.
Thank you, Castle Burman.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Bazden. If there are no other questions, we'll move to items. Sorry, the next presenter, which is Carolyn Lynn Quick. Do we have Carolyn Lynn Quick? You'll have to unmute. You need to unmute.
Here, how's that? Is that okay?
That was good.
There we go. Now we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'm going to start and then I'll take off after me, if that's okay. First of all, I want to say good afternoon. Thank you very much. I'm very grateful for this opportunity to speak. And actually, I am going to talk a little bit about history here in the school and in the community as well as other schools. And Lori, you and I probably will have rebuilt, be saying a couple of the same things, but hopefully it's not too boring to everybody here. Many of you here today may be familiar with with it, with this history, others maybe not. I do believe, though, a refresher course is important at this time. In the early 1800s, there was very, very little incentive to take children away from the helping on their family farm and sending them to school. There were very few teachers or books, little money and little to no government support. School was often held in barns or churches. Eventually, though, many small schools were built throughout the Colchester township. In Colchester Village, school was held in the original stone Christ Church at the south end of the current cemetery on Sullivan Street. A lot of schoolhouse was eventually built south of the church. As early as 1817, Colchester had two certified schoolteachers. Unfortunately, due to land erosion on Lake Erie, this school was lost. A second school was then built in 1856 on the corner of Baggett and County Road 50. But as you said, in 1881, 25 years later, free compulsory education became mandated by law. And so that current school was removed off of the property and our red brick schoolhouse was built on the same lot, but further south with one classroom and one teacher for all grades. It was used right up to the early 1960s. The Colchester School was then sold and privately owned until 2008, when the Town of Essex purchased it. What is so remarkable to me is when I imagine what hardships our ancestors were faced with when they were settling here. Then, in order to have their children educated, they had to build not one, but three different schools after using Christ Church as their classroom. It's not like they had power tools or construction companies like we have today to do this. Now, at this time, all of our schools in Colchester South are privately owned, I believe. The only one left is Colchester Schoolhouse, the exception.
Oh, excuse me.
I'm sorry. Are we good?
Sorry, it appears that I dropped, but I am back. I'm not sure. I wasn't hearing everything that you were saying, but please pick up where you where you left off.
Just repeat the last sentence. Our Colchester Schoolhouse is the exception. It is the last one left. It has been given back to the public. We have been patiently waiting to see how this historic school will best serve our great community here. It should not be sold back into private ownership for financial gain. This school and the community have quite a story to tell. And I ask you for your full support in letting council know what a huge mistake it would be to sell it. Thank you for your time and support.
Thank you very much. Do you, will you have any questions for the Quicks? Any comments? Phil?
Mr. and Mrs. Quick, would you be interested in joining Mr. Parsons in the Friends of Colchester Schoolhouse?
Absolutely. We've already told him that. And I think my husband has a bit, my husband also has a little bit to read here, too, when time allows.
Okay, thanks.
Excuse me, Mr. Polcock?
Yes, please.
That, I don't think that was Mr. Parsons. That was Perry Bazden you're referring to.
I'm sorry, sorry.
Oh, slight error, no problem. I said, made a correction.
Do you want Lynn to read his now, or is there a question?
Yeah, I think it's best to have, yeah, have have Lynn read and then we can ask any other questions.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I too would would like the committee to send a strong and clear message to the town council that I'm opposed to the notice of declaration of surplus lands for 195 Baggett Street with the intention of private sale of this property. I don't have a lot to say, but I would like to give you a brief history of my family and the value of this property. My ancestors first settled here in the late 1700s and lot eight, just on lot eight, just north of the present school. They came from Virginia and Kentucky and were of Dutch origin. Their families attended school and church here in the in the village. The Quick family thrived here and contributed much to the community. There are many families in the area still living here with similar backgrounds. And my history is only a small part of the greater story of the area. For the last 24 years, my wife and I have lived across the road from the school. There can be no better place to retire. This whole area around the school and church should be saved and promoted for all to enjoy. This was the heart of Colchester. I too would hate to see it lost for someone's financial gain. The tranquility of this area will be lost forever. Commercial additions to this property would spoil the historical value and affect our future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Quick. I just want to mention that my connection has dropped me several times. So, Richard, if you're on the line, you may have to step in. Thank you to the Quicks. Are there any questions for the? Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much, Mr. and Mrs. Quick. We appreciate, Steve, yes?
Sorry, yeah.
I'll go ahead first. And I was going to just suggest, Lori, a lot of times when we have these multiple people on Zooms, if you turn off your camera, you at least keep the the audio.
The audio. Okay, good, good to know.
Meetings.
The next time, if it shows up again, I'll I'll do that.
Yeah. So anyways, to Mr. and Mrs. Quick, thank you very much for coming and and presenting to us. That's really something, Lynn, with your your family going back as far as it does in this area. We appreciate the the community coming together and sharing those stories and knowing the history of it. Now, what is important for us in this committee is to remember that we are debating and talking about the schoolhouse itself and recommendations with regard to the schoolhouse and the heritage value of that, which is hard to distinguish. Which is hard to distinguish many times between the overall experience that we get from that corner. So, but all of this adds to to exactly what that schoolhouse means to the people here. So, thank you very much for adding that.
You're welcome.
Our presenter, it's Ann Benetto, who is representing a group of, a larger group of residents who are concerned. Are you there, Ann? Oh, there she is. All right.
We can. Now, I have requested a PowerPoint presentation to be shared. My screen could be shared. I'm not sure if Sarah received it or not.
Hi.
Sarah? Go ahead, Sarah.
Through you, through you, the chair. I did receive an email from you, Ann. However, the link that you provided to your presentation, I'm unable to open. And I did respond advising of such. And I'm unable to allow for sharing of this screen with anybody else. So is it? I'm not sure what we can do at this point, really.
All right, then I'll read what I have. And unfortunately, the pictures, I think, really lend themselves to the presentation of what this means to the group.
Can I ask Ms. Benetto that if you could, or if we could together, work this out, whether it be tomorrow morning, and then that way I can still send it out to the members and still provide it as information on the minutes, if that's okay with you?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening to the Heritage Committee, and I do appreciate and I'm grateful for the opportunity to represent our group. There's many in really concerned citizens that have come together, and I'm here to represent them, which is quite an honor considering they're amazing. I live at 53 Sullivan Street, which is directly behind the old schoolhouse at 195 Baggett Street. I have a master's of education degree, and I've taught for 29 years. During that time, I was twice nominated for Governor General's Award for Teaching Canadian History. While I didn't win, I became a finalist, and I learned much from my teaching years. Placing individuals in certain locations brings natural curious inquiry and engages the mind in stimulating ways. I've had many guests and visitors to our area, as I run a B and B, and they ask many questions concerning the schoolhouse, the church, and the cemetery located at Baggett and Sullivan Streets, our collective heritage. Certain locations just stimulate the mind to trigger memories, too, making for meaningful connections, which is so important. The schoolhouse triggers curiosity, memories, and connects us to our community's past. Many people are looking into their ancestry as a way to learn more of their personal heritage. My roots are not as deep as the Quicks or the McCus or the McCormacks, who came to this area in the 1800s. Mine dates for over 100 years, though. My family purchased this property from my mom and dad in 2002, who purchased it from my grandparents in 1950, who acquired it from my grandfather's brother in 1918. This Arthur Greenhough, a land speculator, purchased when it became available in 1914, and cottagers started coming from Windsor, Detroit with the increasing availability of cars. You can see that my genealogy does go back a ways. We feel a rootedness here, which I suspect many in our of our group feel. Only, they feel it to a greater extent. We appreciate the historic district where we live, the village of Colchester, as does the town. Collectively, this community takes great pride in our deep historic roots. They refer to our connecting road as Historic Road 50, and they honor our heritage, as was celebrated in the 225 years. We made booklets, and we had banners, all kinds of things that were in the supporting pictures. The village has seen significant changes with buildings being demolished on County Road 50 and Jackson Street. These buildings can only be appreciated through pictures and books that share a story of days long ago that shaped this area and much of Upper Canada. My mom, who will turn 99 this year, and her sister is 102, they were cottagers here. And Mom can still tell stories of Miss Hackett at the Hackett's General Store, especially the Telegraph, the forbidden dance halls, and Mr. Dart, who pumped their gas, days of her youth enjoying Colchester. What has remained is Christ Church, the historic cemetery with replica church, and the schoolhouse. My mom more easily tells stories of memories in these areas as walking the space triggers actual experiences. The church was established here in the early 1800s with a circuit writing preacher even before that. The schoolhouse was erected in 1881, such an accomplishment for this group of settlers that had previously schooled their children in the church. In 1957, the replica church was erected in the cemetery honoring the previous generations that worshiped and did life here.
Madam Chair, one minute warning for the presentation. I'm so sorry.
Nearly done.
Okay.
This corner is connected to so much of the community's past. The story for our next generation needs to be told and experienced through meaningful interactions, which this district provides. Preservation of the old schoolhouse is important to the integrity of the local history. This very space at Baggett and Sullivan has been used for centuries as the shared community space. It's mentioned as the village core on many of the maps in early. The community, some Bloom judges have mentioned in the notes to the town that this corridor should be developed, appropriate signage offered, and it gives educational opportunities for visitors. It's long been a quiet respite from the ever-changing present day hustle and bustle, and we need to keep it that way. Our immediate concern is that the schoolhouse property will go into private for profit developers that will change the quaint village feel. We ask that the Heritage Committee to send a strong and clear message to the town council that we are opposed to the notice of declaration of surplus lands and the subsequent intended private sale of the property. This sale will open opportunity to forever change the historic nature of our neighborhood and will have a significant impact upon the residents and all who casually use this space. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ann. Do any members of the committee have questions for Ann? Yes, Steve.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you to Ann. Ann, thank you very much for coming forward and sharing your story and your family's story and the importance of the building to the community. I'll ask a question that Mr. Polcock asked earlier. The group that you represent, are there members there that are committed to working towards fundraising and doing the, you know, actual work that it would take for us to make that schoolhouse a building that we could actually do things, and we know what it needs, right? There's funds that community groups can access that the town can't. And again, if there was going to be a group that comes in to become administrators of that, they would need to take care of that. So, I'm just asking, is your group prepared to become part of that effort?
Yes, thank you for your question. And undoubtedly, there has been a resounding yes in the members of the group that I represent, myself included.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Again, all of these, all this input needs to be focused on the on the heritage value of that building to the community of Colchester and the greater community of Essex. So, we appreciate all that input. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much, Ann. If there are there any other questions for Ann? If not, we're going to move to accept the presentations by the delegations in agenda five. Okay, I, thank you very much, Ann. I think I think the questions have been asked. So, Steve?
Well, I moved to receive.
Sorry, you muted.
Yeah, I'll remove.
To receive, thank you, seconder.
Second.
Okay. I heard Richard, and I also saw Phil, so it is well seconded. Okay, very good. So, very good. So, those presentations are accepted. The next item on the agenda is correspondence. We don't typically have correspondence, but we have attached five pieces of correspondence we received from various individuals. Perry Basden, Carolyn Lynn Quick, Ann Benetto, Jeremy Parsons, and Monica Carruthers. Can I get a motion to accept, to receive the correspondence listed in that agenda item? I see Tony's hand, and can I get a seconder? Steve, thank you very much. Steve, okay, all in favor, I'm assuming. Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, and this brings us down to item nine, which is new business and the heritage matters related to the sale of this surplus property. Does anyone want to begin the conversation? I think there are a number of issues of concern to me. I am, and I'll list them to just to as points to get us started. The first issue that I'm concerned about is the fact that the Heritage Committee wasn't consulted by council before a decision was made to declare the property surplus. And in my own research, in reviewing the sale of surplus land bylaw, I have noted that it does not differentiate between regular parcels of land or buildings and heritage properties. And furthermore, it has a notice provision, I believe it's section 10 of that bylaw, that allows the clerk to use one of three methods to communicate with the public. One is by announcing it at open council, which he did. But the other two are related to communicating through a subscription newspaper. And although we do have a subscription newspaper in our community, the other newspaper is not a subscription newspaper, so the language is a little dated. And of course, most information these days is shared with members of the community through social media. And I'm concerned at the wording. As someone who has done quite a bit of legal drafting, I can tell you that the and/or construction at the end of each of the options. So, they can announce it in open council and/or publish it in a subscription newspaper and/or, I forget what the third one is, announce it in this other way. It basically doesn't allow for proper community input. And so, my concern is that council is perhaps not aware that we don't have sufficient protections in place for heritage properties like this one, but like others. We have the train station we have the Carnegie Building in Essex, and we even have culturally significant structures like the like the Senataph at Town Hall that really, in my opinion, need to be protected differently than just a regular piece of vacant property. And that can be done through a revision of the sale of surplus land bylaw. And perhaps there are other pieces of legislation, and I wouldn't know what those are. But I think that we need to bring to council's attention that some sort of safeguards should be built into that particular bylaw to prevent this sort of situation from happening in the future. That's my first concern. I'm going to just open it to members to discuss any concerns that they have. Or I can make a, I can make a resolution if it would be more suitable, and we can have a vote and a discussion on that resolution. Steve, is that a more appropriate way to approach it?
Yeah, I would suggest that any, as we go through this, if anyone has a concern or something they want to bring up, that we we identify that one and deal with that issue first and then move on to the next one. So, I would suggest go ahead and make that motion.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. I just started to ramble. I really meant to open it to the rest of you, and I would come later. But I'll just make the motion, and I'm sorry, it's a bit of a lengthy one. But I've written it out, and I think this is the appropriate motion, that council promptly revise bylaw 855 related to the sale of surplus lands to provide special recognition, protections, and safeguards for publicly owned property of cultural heritage significance. And that the said revised bylaw ensure robust stakeholder involvement by including enhanced public notice requirements with extended periods of public consultation. That all public notices announcing the potential or actual sale of public lands containing cultural heritage assets identify the affected property by legal description as well as familiar and commonly used names, I'll speak to that in a moment, with specific mention of their heritage designation status. And that Schedule A to bylaw 855 be updated. It is a register of heritage property, it's a register of town properties, that it be updated to include a separate list of cultural assets of historical significance. And I've added some of these things, including a a request that they include familiar and commonly used names, because when the notices went in the newspapers, they were identified as 195 Baggett Street. But I wouldn't have known that that was the Colchester Schoolhouse. There was a map, and I was pretty sure it was the Colchester Schoolhouse. But I do believe that describing something by its familiar name is especially important when we want the community to be aware. It's just a minor point, but I think an important point. Okay, that's my my motion. Can I get a seconder?
Second, Madam Chairman.
Oh, thank you. I heard Richard, and I saw Tony's hand. Any discussion on this particular issue?
Lori, I just want to say I'm in support of of how you've laid it out.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Steve?
That that motion's a mouthful. That's probably all motions I've met in the last six years. But it's very, very well laid out. My only question would be, and it would be something probably for our director and planning is to define a cultural heritage asset. So, that's not necessarily something that's listed or something that's been registered. So, we would just need to, we need to quantify that or qualify that, because that that becomes something that what you consider that a heritage asset, but I don't necessarily. So, we would, we would need some definition to that. But I do agree with, I agree with the feel of it, that what it is you're trying to get. And that's, again, we're making this recommendation to council. It would be up to council to make sure that we put definitions in all of those lines. But I do like the entire feel of that, yes.
Thank you, absolutely. That's a very good point. The bylaw would need to have definitions included. And we haven't yet called on Rita, but I believe that one of Rita's goals is to have to do some sort of a cultural mapping. Sorry, I'm sorry, Rita. I can't quite come up with the right word, but a project where we would identify what the heritage assets are. So, a bylaw could dovetail with some of the work that Rita is proposing to do. Rita, would you like to speak on that?
Through the chair, certainly. So, we currently have a heritage register, which includes listed properties, such as the Colchester Schoolhouse and the neighboring Christ Church. includes listed properties such as the Colchester Schoolhouse and the neighboring Christ Church, as well as designated property within the town of Essex. So those are properties that we've identified as having cultural heritage value as is defined in the Ontario Heritage Act and in the prescribed Ontario regulation. But as Laurie noted, we are looking to undertake a cultural master plan in the future to identify additional resources as well as those resources that perhaps we've lost, such as important landscapes where settlements once were, that we hope to promote through our heritage plaque program. So in terms of a definition, we can certainly assist with providing one to the clerks division if council decides to direct amendments to their surplus lands bylaw.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Rita. That's what I was looking for, cultural master plan. I just, I couldn't come up with it.
If I can add something, Madam Chair, this is Laurie Chadwick.
Yes, Laurie?
Thank you, through you to the committee. Now, this notice of motion, I just looked at the agenda. I don't see that there is a copy. Madam Chair, would you be able to send administration, specifically our recording secretary, a copy of that notice of motion, should it be?
Absolutely.
Okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Secondly, just to follow up with Ms. Jabour's statement. The intent down the road, and it could take several years, is to prepare a cultural master plan for the municipality. And so what I would urge is that to, if, if it is the flavor of council and decision of council to update the bylaw, that it not be tied to the completion of the cultural master plan because that may be, you know, one to two years from now.
Yes, that's a very good point. And I was just thinking in my mind that I knew that Rita had this on the horizon and that it will be one of those opportunities for the town to collect that information. But I take your point, and that is a good one. I do have the, any, any resolutions that I'm planning to make tonight, I have already typed them out and I'm reading them to the committee verbatim, so I can certainly forward them to Sarah. So we've had, we've moved the motion, we've seconded the motion, I believe. Are there any more comments, or shall we go to a vote?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Richard?
I just want to take the opportunity to make a few comments related to the motion. First of all, I thought you did a phenomenal job of putting the motion together because it's, it's not a, it's not easy. It's not easy to express what our objective should be in this particular case. But I just, I just wanted to state that my concerns related to this property are that its heritage needs to be recognized and it needs to be preserved. The question is how to achieve that goal without, or achieve that goal the most economically to the community while meeting the community's needs. I think it's premature to look to the private sector, at least at this point, to undertake that preservation. The community, because the community hasn't yet had an opportunity to both express how it thinks the property should be utilized or to know how that utility is going to be paid for. The community needs time and the opportunity to make its case.
If I can, I'm sorry, Richard, to interrupt you, but that's a conversation we still need to have. That doesn't really have anything to do with Laurie's motion of changing the, of changing the bylaw.
It does, it does, Steve, because the, the purpose of the, the recommendation is to change the means by which we let the community know what is going on before things happen.
If that's where you're headed with that, that's fine. I thought we were looking at.
Well, that's, that's where I'm headed.
Okay, thanks. Yep.
So anyways, that's, I think with, with those comments, I pretty much, pretty much made my point. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Okay, so all in favor of the motion? I can't see Tony at the, there he is. Okay?
Yes.
Very good. Phil, very good. Richard said yes. Thank you. All in favor, we're all in favor. Motion passes. I will now not speak, and I will ask the members if they would like to make any comments or any motions related to this matter. Phil?
Through the chair, to Rita, Ms. Jabour. What is the zoning for the schoolhouse? Like the, like is it residential or is it commercial or?
Through the chair to Counselor Pocock. Or sorry, not counselor, I'm sorry, it's been a long day, member. The zoning of the property is G12, which denotes a green district for public or private park purposes, campgrounds, exhibition halls.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I think, is it okay if I talk? Because I think you're on mute and I didn't hear a word you said. And I, I'm still not very good at reading lips.
Sorry, sorry, I thought I had unmuted it. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that you know, we don't have all that many heritage properties. This one is, it's kind of a natural, you know, that and the only thing I would say is to council would be that I understand the financial pressures that we're under as a town. But you know, here's an opportunity where I think I'm not quite sure how to say this, but if we get this community support and they get involved with this project, I think that's a great idea to try to keep this thing alive and keep it within the community. But I would give them, I would give them a bit of a deadline. I would say, let's give them five years or to, like, we need to put some heat on, on this group to make something happen. Otherwise, 10 years from now, we'll be talking about the same thing. So I, I believe that that this heritage, if possible, that this heritage site should be maintained, updated through the Friends of Colchester Schoolhouse, etc. But, but I think that there should be some, there should be a deadline on this to, to kind of move this thing forward because I don't know, if nothing's done to this property in five years, I'm sure it may not last five years. I mean, looking at those, you know, the state of the, the properties, but so recap, I really like the idea of advising council that this should be preserved and to that this should be preserved, but I think we, and we should give this, this, this group an opportunity to do something with it. But give them some, put some timelines on this.
Thank you, Tony. Would the commit, would, would you be in favor of making some sort of motion to to notify council of our ongoing efforts to, to identify an arms-length organization provisionally identified as the Colchester, Friends of Colchester Schoolhouse? And that such an organization be encouraged within five years to complete fundraising and a fundraising project and some form of plan to preserve and utilize the building. I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but I'm wondering if this is something that we should remind council of, that this, it was a work in progress. And now that we are aware that there are people interested, should there be a motion to that effect, that we remind council or we advise council that individuals have expressed an interest in forming a Friends of Colchester Schoolhouse group? And that we would recommend council provide them with a five-year window in which to fundraise and effect renovations to the building?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Richard?
I don't disagree with putting a timeframe on, on what's being proposed, and I agree wholeheartedly with, with Tony's, Tony's statement. Where I have a bit of a problem, where I feel that, that putting a timeframe on it is premature, is that number one, we don't know what the community wants to do with the building yet. The community has to, has to, first of all, get their collective heads together and identify what they propose to do with the, with the building. Secondly, once that's been identified, they have to go in and have, have the building assessed to identify exactly what has to be done and how much it's going to cost in order to execute that, that objective. We may find after going through that process that we may be able to do what needs to be done to that building in a matter of three years. On the other hand, we may find that, especially if there's structural issues to be addressed, that it may take longer than five years to come up with the necessary funds to, to do something with it. I would, I would far rather see us put a motion forward first of all, encouraging the establishment of the Friends of Colchester Schoolhouse. Because keep in mind, this has to be an arms-length group. It can't be a committee of the town, and it can't be a committee that is being essentially subsidized by the town. Okay, so I think our first, our first recommendation to council has to be that a, a, an arms-length group, the Friends of Colchester Schoolhouse be established. They go through the necessary assessments as far as what the community wants to do with the, the property and, you know, what has to be done in order to execute that. And then we can start talking about a timeframe. So perhaps giving the, giving the community six months to get the group together to do, to do the, the the brainstorming as far as what the community sees the property, what role the community sees the property playing? And you know, what has to be done to achieve that? I think six months, eight months is, is plenty of time to be able to get, to get that work done. Once that's done and they come back to, come back to us and come back to council with what they would like to see done, then we can do a realistic assessment of how difficult it's going to be to come up with the money necessary to execute that, that plan. How's that for long-winded?
That's good. Steve?
Thank you. Through you, this, this is a good conversation. This is how we need to go through this, and I think I'd like to even bring it a little tighter. I think there's recommendation that this committee needs to bring to council. And so there's three of them that I think, there's the recommend to council that we've, we've looked at what the proponent has brought to us, and we can recommend the sale. We can recommend not to sell. We can recommend to defer until others have had an opportunity, including a Friends of group. I think for us to put any kind of time limit on there as a committee, we leave that to council to decide how long is too long. I know that there's been investigation by administration into the building. Now, I don't know if we have anybody on this meeting that could advise us. Has there been an estimate of what it would take to bring the building back to the place that it's habitable? Because right now, we can't, we don't hold any functions there. We don't hold anything inside the building because it is not inhabitable by way of electrical, plumbing, all of that stuff. So I was just wondering, is there somebody on our meeting here tonight that has any knowledge of those costs?
I see Doug Sweet. Hi, Doug. Would you like to comment?
Through Madam Chair. The last price was approximately four years ago, and it was just over $300,000. So with inflation and new costs, maybe above that for sure. I just want to stress, that's about four years ago, we had a price.
And that was, that was to do what with the building, Doug?
A great point. A lot of the utilities, as Steve mentioned, I don't have it in front of me.
Was there, was there any sort of, was there any sort of objective in terms of the use of the building that, that estimate was, was based on? Or was it simply to, you know, throw up, throw up new drywall with insulation and then we'll decide what we do with it after that?
I wasn't here at the time, but I believe the intent was to get it ready, if it was to be ready for public use. There is no direct what the use would be, but accessibility for the washroom to get the pump to code, electrical up to code, etc.
Okay.
Thanks, Doug.
Steve?
Yes.
Just, if I could just make one observation?
Certainly.
When I, when I suggested that we make that sort of a motion, I'm recognizing the fact that, you know, we're simply, we're simply advising council on what we think they should do.
Yep.
Okay, if we make that motion saying that, that we should form this group and that they should be given six or eight months to, to get, get things together, it's entirely up to council whether or not they feel that, number one, they want to, they want to have a group put together to, to come up with, with proposals, and two, how long they want to give them to do it. We're simply, we're simply making a motion as to what, what we think should be the next step. And, and the other thing, the other thing I think we need to keep in mind too, and I'm trying, I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be fair to, to the developers as well, is that if, if we can't come up with a proposal for what should be done to the property, for, or done with the property and some ideas to what the, what the costs involved are and what the, what the possibilities of raising that kind of money are, we should, we should be making the, we should be allowing the private sector to, at the very least, play a role in the preservation of that building. Okay, and to, to put it off more than, more than eight months, I think is being unreasonable to them.
Madam Chair, I do have a question, when time permits. This is Laurie Chadwick.
Okay, one moment, Laurie. Richard? Okay, so we've had a few different thoughts on this issue. Does anybody want to make a specific motion? Think about that while I give the floor to Laurie for a minute.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you to the committee. Just to bring forward this information as a, as a reminder and as information that you may have, but also information that can be shared with the public, so everyone is on the same page. Council is not mandated at this time to engage the committee prior to declaring a property a surplus, as you, Ms. Brett, has indicated prior to making the motion, just during this meeting. The Heritage Committee may wish to comment on the sale, no different than any member of the public. However, the committee However, the committee must be engaged when and if a proposal entails demolition to the heritage feature. So as a friendly reminder, any motion that is put forward to council, council may choose to, again, if it's a comment on the sale, no different than any member of the public could consider. However, council, as a friendly reminder, is not mandated to engage the committee prior to declaring the property surplus unless there is demolition to heritage features. Thank you.
Nobody's suggesting that, Lori?
I think that now I can be, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that Ms. Chadwick is just reminding us that council does not have to consult the committee prior to, prior to declaring property surplus. I, of course, my first motion would, is based on a recommendation that council consider consulting the community before declaring this type of property as surplus. So we are trying to address that issue. Because we have a bylaw in the state that it currently is, she is right, what we can do is, we can provide comments to council on the proposed sale. And I think that Steve started out his comments a few minutes ago by saying that we can recommend council sell, we can recommend that they not sell, or we can ask them to defer and provide an opportunity to an organization, which we are calling Friends of Colchester Schoolhouse, to see what they can do in a reasonable period of time. So just, I think to bring us back to that conversation, are there any motions that people would like to make and that we can entertain on this issue?
I would move option number three.
To defer?
Yes.
Okay. So motion on the table moved by Richard that the committee recommend that council defer sale of the property until such time as a, an organization tentatively called the Friends of Colchester Schoolhouse have an opportunity to review their opt, to, to, to organize and to review their options. Is there a seconder for that motion? Steve? Steve will second it? Okay. And discussion of that motion then? Phil?
I'm sure your chair, I, I'm fine with the deferring, but I don't think it, we should kind of give the, as we've sat on this Friends of Colchester for a couple of years now, because we've, it's been up and just no one's ever taken the stab at it. Giving that organization, if the members or the people who have spoke tonight are planning on doing that, give them like a month, maybe two months to go to council and have their say. Because I, I don't think it should be a never-ending deferral from us, right? So that's just my thought.
Okay. And I think that how long council gives them is really up to council, whatever is reasonable in their eyes. But I think we can probably be, not necessarily be specific on that. Just, I think we can just say, just mention that we want to give them an opportunity. Steve, I saw your hand.
Yes. And, and I agree. I, it's, and to me, it's, it's, it's more than just that. It's, it's a, an opportunity to take a step back for everyone to look at this through the eyes of, of the historical nature of, of the part. I think there's, there's, there is no rush to make this. Now, I'm not going to, I'm not going to speak on behalf of the developers. People come forward, they've got an idea, they've got something they're looking to do, and they will present that on Monday to council. I know that some counselors don't really have a good feel for the importance of the schoolhouse. I'm fortunate to have moved out to Colchester and I love the village and I spend all of my time there. Some people only get out here once or twice in a year and don't understand really how much it means. So it gives an opportunity for the people that have been emailing us, the people that have been calling us, to really have an opportunity to make their case heard and give us time to, to think on it. Now, this may only, only defer till the following meeting, if that's how council chooses to go, or they could defer further. But I think our, our job is the, as the Heritage Committee is to request this extra time to give this group an opportunity to make a case. Not necessarily have it all fleshed out, not have their fundraisers put together, but to show a commitment, to show a group that is out there that's prepared to work. And, and council will give them as much time as they decide to give them if they take this reservation, recommendation.
Tony?
I'm in agreement with, with Phil and with Steve. I, I think we should let council know that we think that this is an important site, in our opinion, and that they should give the local residents a few months to kind of develop a plan for the, the property as to what some of the alternatives might be to protect its cultural heritage. So I'm going to agree with, with Phil and Steve both said. I'd give them six months.
Okay.
Up to.
So am I correct that we have a motion on the table? The motion to defer, including giving the Friends of potential organization called Friends Colchester Schoolhouse an opportunity? And it has been seconded. Am I correct on that procedurally? Yeah, yes, Steve?
I think we, we talked about those, the most discussion, but we didn't actually make the motion.
Okay.
So, and I, I would, I'm going to make a motion just because I know what I had thought out here and I don't want to add timing. I'm going to recommend that the Heritage Committee recommend to council that we defer the sale of the property until others have had an opportunity to bring forward different ideas, including a Friends of Colchester Schoolhouse. I, I think we have to make sure we're not being, we're not, that we're inclusive and there, you can't just say, okay, we're only going to allow one other group to come in and tell us what they think. I think we need to just say we're go, we are, we're going to recommend you defer making that decision until such a time others have an opportunity. And that way it's, it's open and the council can decide what kind of timing they want to put on that. So that's my motion.
Madam Chair, is that an amendment to the motion that's on the table?
I don't believe there was a motion on the table, Richard. I think we were just discussing the wording of it. So unless someone wants.
I made a motion and I understood that Steve seconded it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I, I do apologize. I'm just going to hop in here. Richard, you are correct. You did motion that the committee, you know, ask, recommend to council that they defer the sale until, you know, residents can prepare Friends of and so on and so forth. Steve, you did motion that, you were seconded on it. Then there was discussion. And then Steve, you just did another motion, which would essentially be an amendment to Richard's motion, just saying instead of making it just Friends of, it would be any different ideas, including.
That's what I wanted, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Okay.
You can't entertain another motion when there's a motion on the table unless it's an amendment.
Yes, yes. Well, Richard, I don't have, I don't have a vertigo problem, but I do have a blood sugar problem. And my, my attention span is about to get really, really low. So I couldn't remember if there was a, a motion on the table or not. So if, are you in agreement with state, with Steve's small amendment to your motion?
I am in agreement with Steve's amendment.
Okay. So I'm going to call the vote. All in favor?
On the amendment?
Of that motion. Okay. And, uh, Richard, I assume you are in favor and no opposed. So that motion is carried.
Lori?
Yes, Tony?
Just a general comment. It would make some sense in however we present this to council that maybe we provide some preamble with respect to how important we think this site is. Or is that something we can communicate through Steve, who's a member of our committee?
Yeah. Well, I think we can probably both do it. Yeah. I, I am on council's agenda. I have put in a delegation request. I assume that I, I haven't received anything back from them, but I assume that I'm going to be speaking to them on Monday to present these motions that we're passing tonight and to speak on the historical significance of the property. Steve, did you want to say?
You are confirmed?
I am confirmed, Lori?
Yeah, I did see you on the agenda. It was just published this afternoon, late this afternoon.
Okay, super. Thank you so much. Any other comments, Steve?
Yes, thank you. Actually, if, if we're all done with that particular motion, I would like to bring another motion to this meeting that fits in with talking about the schoolhouse. At this time, the schoolhouse property is listed, but is not registered. And I think that we should take the next step and have the schoolhouse registered as a heritage building. But I would like to bring that before the committee and see if there's appetite for doing that and then check with Ms. Jabour about what we need to do to go forward with that.
Okay. So Steve, your motion would be that we recommend that council proceed with registering the property as a, designating the property is what, what we would be doing.
Yes. So first, I don't want to make that motion yet. I'd like to hear from Ms. Jabour as to what the process be and then see if everybody has appetite to go through it.
Sure. Okay. Rita?
For the chair, in order to designate a property, we would have to forward a recommendation to the council, recommending that they initiate the notice of intention to designate. I would have to prepare a report with contributions from the committee on the reasons why we feel that the Colchester Schoolhouse is a designate for, candidate for designation. And we have to follow the provincial criteria. So in terms of the Colchester Schoolhouse, we know it has contextual value. We know it has architectural value. So we'll look at that more in depth. And maybe at the next Heritage Committee meeting, consideration. And once, once the council receives that, they can, they can choose to decide whether they want to initiate the designation process or not. If they decide to initiate the designation process, it will be publicized in the local papers. And it will be publicized for 30 days, during which period anybody can file an objection to that notice. And after which period, the council may wish to refer the objection to the Conservation Review Board. There are some amendments being made right now to the Ontario Heritage Act, which would mean that there might be lengthier timelines for them to make a decision and different bodies that might handle an appeal, like the Local Planning Appeal Tribunal. But going off of what I know, it goes to the Conservation Review Board. And, and they'll determine whether, whether the objection is, or council will make their decision. And that appeal can be made and they'll determine whether the designation is warranted or not. So we'll begin with a recommendation.
Okay. Thank you, Rita. Steve, do you have questions of Rita?
Oh, that's good.
Okay. Phil, I see your hand.
Rita, with this, if it was designated, would that tie some of the hands of any interested parties in their, maybe their plans or, or direction they want to take the property? Whether it's the Friends of Colchester or another group or the developer?
So through the chair, in the designation bylaw that council will pass, they will have to identify what the heritage attributes of, of that property is. And it may just be the building itself and the original features from 1881. So if I'm using Mr. Lewis's and Mr. Flynn's proposal, they would have to ask council for their permission to demolish those, those, those features that are currently existing. But council would be consulting with their Heritage Committee and they would be looking for a recommendation from their Heritage Committee on whether any of those features are culturally significant and whether the demolition proposal is going to affect any heritage attribute of that property. So they, they would have to go through the proper channels, the proper channels being council and such proposal being vetted through the Heritage Committee.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frida. Okay. Any other questions related to designation?
Are you looking for a seconder, Madam Chair?
I'm sorry?
Are you looking for a seconder?
Steve, I'm not certain that you have actually, have you made the motion?
No. So I will make the motion that we, we, we address council and ask them to start the designation process.
Second?
Seconded by Richard?
Long overdue.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll call the question. All in favor? Okay? Any opposed? Richard, I didn't hear you.
I'm on board.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay. Are there any other matters that members of the committee would like to discuss? Okay. If not, I think we can move down to adjournment. Before we do, are you, okay, I think we're ready to, we've got a mover already. So I will attend council on Monday and I will bring forward these recommendations that we have and I will give them a history as well of, of the schoolhouse so that everyone is fully apprised. But I would also like to tell everyone that this committee meets every, on the last Thursday of every month. And so our next meeting is on January 28th at 5:00 and of course, it is on Zoom. So if I can, Phil, I think you're ready to move that we adjourn. A seconder? Can I get a seconder? I see both Tony and Steve. And the meeting is concluded. Thank you very much to everyone who attended. I see we still have 37 participants on, online.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks for your, appreciate it.
Yes, very much so. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a good evening.
Good night.
Good night.